Okay, we'll call the meeting to order, please. Stand for the singing of Oh, Canada.
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Record of attendance, Linda, you're good. Declarations of conflict of interest, anyone?
Yeah.
Approval of agenda, additions or deletions, and there's a sheet in front of us. We have 11A as an addition, recommendation from Planning Advisory Committee. Any more additions, Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship, just a quick FYI, welcome and thank you.
Thank you. Okay, good, that's 11B. Anything else? Counselor?
Just a quick item under Communities in Bloom, under Council Advisory Committee, so we can squeeze it in there.
Okay, so, under Council Advisory Committees?
Yep.
I'm gonna put 9AC.
Or even Bc.
Okay, I'm just gonna add Communities in Bloom, under Report, under Reports. Anything else? Okay. Motion to approve the agenda with the addition.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Questions.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Approval of minutes, Town Council, March 12th, 2015. Moved and seconded, discussion?
Questions.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the Whole, March 17th, 2015.
(Inaudible).
Moved?
Seconded.
Seconded, any discussion?
Questions.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Town Council, March 27th, 2015.
(Inaudible).
So moved?
Seconded.
Seconded, discussion?
Questions.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the Whole, March 31st, 2015. So moved?
Seconded.
Seconded, any discussion?
Questions.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Town Council, March 31st, 2015.
So moved.
Moved, seconded. Any discussion?
Questions.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And Committee of the Whole, April 2nd, 2015.
So, seconded.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Questions.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Business arising, request for decision, council meetings, bylaw amendments. Cao?
Thank you, your worship, the Bylaw and Policy Review Committee reviewed the council meetings bylaw and the agenda policy and are proposing the amendments to the council meetings bylaw as attached, so because it is a bylaw, tonight would be first reading of the bylaw amendments, and if council approves first reading, we would then advertise a public hearing, which would be held at the next council meeting, provided there is sufficient time, I know we're a little tight. But anyway, it would either be the May council meeting or the June council meeting, there'd be a public hearing as part of that, and then you would do second reading if you're satisfied with the content of the bylaw.
Good. Okay, so, I'm assuming that everybody's had a chance to look this over, I'm looking for a motion to approve the first reading.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Questions.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Oh, sorry about that. Counselor McIsaac, go ahead.
My question will be to the cao, did you set in on these meetings, Jeff? Is there any, anything that has changed drastically that you could see that could, for the better or for the worse? I would presume that, is it far from what we had before, or is it a real good cleanup in your, in your recommendation? Not so much a recommendation, but your thoughts.
I don't have any issue at all with the amendments as presented, I was part of the discussion, and I think the members as a committee gave, gave the entire bylaw a careful consideration, and I think the amendments are fair and reasonable.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Good. The motion's on the floor, any further discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Oh, sorry, Counselor.
Thank you, thank you, no, I'm not-
You're seeing sideways.
I just want to, I just want to make it clear that I will vote in favor of it, I will vote with a majority with council, but I just wanted to, I just wanted to make clear and state my considerable misgivings still regarding the single egress under the building code enforcement policy, that's all.
That's the next item.
Is it?
Yep.
I thought we were already down there.
No, we didn't, we didn't vote on this one, yeah.
Oh, pardon me.
That's okay.
I'll backtrack.
All right, that's okay.
Questions?
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Building code enforcement policy, this is the one. This is the one. Go ahead, Counselor.
It's all right, go ahead, I'll wait.
Okay. Caio, did you want to speak to this, please, and thank you?
Okay, we do have a bylaw enforcement policy, we did not have a building code enforcement policy, and so with the new building inspector here in the last year, Laura Lee picked up on that, and between herself and Caroline, they have, they have brought forward this policy for your consideration.
You might want to speak into the microphone. Thank you. I'm not sure. Look, it's the fire chief to the rescue. You can fix that so it lands on him. Press the button.
While we were reviewing, while we were drafting the building code bylaw enforcement policy, we also made some slight proposed amendments to the actual building code bylaw as well, so that's also in front of you.
Go ahead, cao.
Sorry, your worship-
So we're on the, we're on the building code enforcement policy.
Right, so the policy only requires a motion of council to approve, but the bylaw amendment would require first reading to be approved tonight, so there are two decisions that you would need to make.
Okay.
So deal with the policy first, perhaps?
Okay, so I am looking for a motion to approve the policy first.
(Inaudible).
Okay, so moved, seconded by the deputy mayor, any more discussion?
Questions.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And looking for a motion to approve first reading of the council meeting, no, I'm on the wrong one, proposed town of Yarmouth building code bylaw.
So moved.
No, the building code, yeah. Okay, moved by Counselor Mooney.
Seconded.
Second deputy mayor. Any further discussion?
Questions.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Request for direction amendment of sewer discharge bylaw. Caio?
Thank you, your worship, town engineer taking heed to the issues that we've had with surcharging of the sewer system. In some places, some parts of town where we have sanitary, mixed sanitary and storm sewer together, sometimes during storm events, the sewer gets backed up and it becomes a mess for some of our residents. So in order to try and mitigate against that risk, the town engineer is suggesting that we amend our sewer discharge bylaw to prevent or to prohibit stormwater, surface water, roof downspouts, footing drains, and yard drains to go into the sanitary system. And so with the bylaw, we would then be able to enforce a prohibition on that activity. And so what that means is that we would eliminate those inflows and hopefully reduce the risk of sanitary sewer backing up into people's basement drains and footing drains and so on.
Counselor McIsaac?
Thank you, your worship, Jeff, 14 years ago when I built my house on Main Street, I was notified that I could not put my downspouts for my roof drain in the system. That was already a bylaw back then, was it or was it not?
Go ahead. Here.
I believe it's prohibited under the Municipal Government Act, but we don't have a bylaw to that effect.
Oh, okay.
So what the engineer's recommending here is that we actually put that in our own bylaw.
I got you.
So we have a greater capability for enforcement.
Great, got you, thank you.
It doesn't say have.
Right, so this is a request for direction, so before he drafted the bylaw or had the solicitor assist him in drafting the bylaw amendment, he's simply looking for, does council agree with that idea, and if you do, then we'll go through the process of drafting the amendment.
Okay, good. Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship, I would then make the motion to accept the request for direction on the amendment of the sewer discharge bylaw presented by the town engineer.
Okay. Moved, have I got a seconder?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, Counselor Dennis?
Just wondering, people who are already hooked up, so what would happen, they'd have to remove it?
That's part of the, part of the reason we'll consult with the solicitor on the amendment, is what authority we can have in that case to require people to disconnect or to stop discharging, but certainly would allow us to prevent it in the future.
Yeah, so if we made them disconnect, that could cause them to have flooding, right?
Well, it depends on what they do.
Like when they put in the footings and everything, and the weeping tiles and stuff, it depends on where it's going now.
They would have to come up with a solution.
Good. Any more discussion?
Questions.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Fire prevention bylaw amendments. Do you want this one? I remember seeing, I only remember hearing about it because of the red paint, but I don't-
Who had the Committee of the Whole, isn't it, that we reviewed it?
All right, so first reading, so I'm looking for a motion to approve first reading.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Questions.
Question?
I have one there, I painted it red.
Oh, good. Did you hear that? Chief, the deputy mayor's already on it. Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Results from requests for expressions of interest killing building?
(Inaudible).
Oh, sorry.
Worship, I was a little bit behind the wheel, I guess, a senior moment. I noticed, I sent council, the cao and an email on the 14th requesting an item being added to the agenda, and I carbon copied council on it. I noticed it's not on the agenda, and that's regarding the Vancouver Street median.
Oh. Yep, we, but, we can add, we can certainly add that. Oh, okay, good. So I'm gonna put 11C Vancouver Street median, and, sorry about that, Counselor. No, thanks for bringing it to our attention.
You didn't notice it?
Nope, it's all good, I didn't even notice. So that's 11C, and we're going to bypass 7E. Excuse me, we're down to new business, draft, you certainly can, go ahead.
Why are we bypassing 7E?
He was just saying, he was just pulling the information together.
Oh, okay, great, I didn't hear the reason why, okay, great.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so new business, draft fire inspection policy. Chief, have any input on this?
Thank you, your worship, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the draft fire inspection policy, and if necessary, go into first reading if that's necessary, this one's not required. Just move that we accept it, we've beaten this around a bit.
So.
Okay. Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Questions.
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Counselor McIsaac, did you have a?
No, I just-
I think both of you are like-
I just get excited when I put the light on.
Don't get me, don't get me laughing. Oops. It's all good. Okay, citizen advisory appointments, so we just have to decide how we're gonna do this, we're gonna do it like we did last year, and just the show of hands, understanding that afterwards we really need to confirm eligibility, but I think we're, we all understand where we are, Counselor.
Your worship, thank you, just a question for the cao, under the waterfront development board slash committee, how many seats are on that board? I noticed it wasn't in the, so how many are available? That's my first question.
That one is probably the most difficult one, the number, Linda, were we able to confirm the number? So, we believe we're at 15, although we couldn't find the version of the bylaw that we had amended to allow the additional five, if you recall.
Oh, that was the YDC thingy that we did.
Right, we created five additional seats on there.
Yes.
So it was 10, increased to 15, and within those, there were some that were specific to specific industries.
Yes.
Small boat, large boat, and so on.
Okay. And, so how many are we adding of this group or recommended, there are four new applicants, so are we, how many seats, or is there a limit on these seats? Because I see we have seven currently sitting, and I assume current means they have reapplied for their positions? So how many are we adding to the waterfront development board?
Well, you wouldn't be, we'd have to appoint the entire board all over again, right? So anyone current, if you wish to reappoint, is reappointment. There's a, there's a, one town councillor seat, Linda? Do you have it? Two town councillor seats, and there is one municipal councillor seat, so you subtract that from the 15, you're down to 12. And, so I can, do you want me to read through what the criteria are?
Yes.
Okay. So two representatives of the town of Yarmouth, at least one of whom shall be a town councillor, so one councillor. One representative from the commercial small boat under 50 feet sector. One representative of a property owner whose property is situated within the boundaries of the Waterfront Development Corporation, which I believe is all of town with council's direction. One representative from the commercial large boat over 50 feet sector. Did I say over in the first one, it was under?
I think it said under.
Okay, all right. One representative from the tourism industry. One representative who shall be a property owner and/or operator of a business within the downtown business improvement district of the town of Yarmouth. Two representatives of the municipality of the District of Yarmouth, at least one of whom shall be a municipal councillor. One representative selected at large by the Yarmouth Waterfront Development Corporation Limited. And then, there was the motion, and this isn't, this is the 2008 addition, but there was a motion that we couldn't find the document where council, if you recall, added five positions for the YDC, so downtown business community. All of the appointments are made by town council, so if we wish to seek the nomination of the municipal council for their councillor, we could do that, but that's, we haven't done that process yet, so we would have to do that.
Sorry, Counselor, go ahead.
Well, okay, so the YDC arrangement was done during the acoustics plan business, and I'm just wondering, are we still within that YDC group, because, and I'm curious what the deputy mayor, I believe he's chair of that thing, as you're not, his comments on that, because I see in what you're reading off, there seems to be a movement that there would be almost an imbalance supporting non-waterfront business versus the retail sector in the other parts of town. And politicians, I think, if I'm not mistaken, the original intent of the Waterfront Development Corporation was to give the people on the waterfront a voice, and a venue that they could, you know, herald their own work and develop their own work. And what I seem to be seeing, if five seats are gonna be filled by merchants, and then plus other seats of this, and plus your councillors, the majority of people sitting around the table of the Waterfront Development Corporation really are not involved with the waterfront. And am I right or wrong in that? So I'm wondering if we need to revisit those five retail seats, because, and I'm curious what deputy mayor has to say, because I know I've been around this table with the waterfront development, the intent was, is that the waterfront development board would represent waterfront owners, and the fishermen, et cetera.
Deputy?
Oh, sorry, Counselor Mooney, yours is on first. Yeah, and I think the answer, I think Jeff, thank you, your worship, I think Jeff brought it up earlier, just a minute ago, was when we added the five downtown merchants to the waterfront development board, we were tasking the waterfront development board at that time to do the acoustics plan, right? So now that we've moved the acoustics plan out of waterfront development and brought it here at council level, maybe we should revisit how the makeup of the board is, so you're 100% right on the retail part, but the makeup of what we're getting the waterfront development to do is a little different than it was five or six years ago. Yeah.
Deputy?
In looking over the applications and thinking about the number on the committee, my first thought was, gee whiz, I could be happy with the people who are, been, at this point, have applied for reappointment, and not worry about any additional people, and then we would have the council, town of Yarmouth rep, and the representatives, and the municipality representatives, and that would give us probably 10 or 11. However, in looking at the names who have applied, certainly, I'd love to have someone like Glenna Boudreau on the committee, and, but, as, for female representation, you guys, and, and, so the, I just want the right size, workable committee, in which everyone around the table can contribute and feel comfortable contributing, and sometimes when you have 12 or 14, it's laborious. That's a personal opinion. Thank you very much, your worship.
Thank you, deputy. Counselor McIsaac?
I thought you were gonna say, McIsaac around the table, it's laborious, but that's okay. Jeff, and to the rest of the, to my fellow councillors, I've always had a problem with the municipalities sitting around the table making money decisions for the town of Yarmouth as a voting member. I wouldn't have a problem if they weren't a voting member, but when they're voting on money issues, and I know that we partner a lot with the municipal units a lot, and it's money, money related, but this here is a little different. This is moving the town, the Water Street and Main Street forward. I don't know if a representative, a voting member from the municipality should have a voice in spending taxpayers' money in the town. I don't have a voice spending tax monies in the municipality, this is just my thought. I was never comfortable. I like them sitting there, but I don't like them being voting members, especially on money issues. I have a problem with that, and that's just my problem, I don't know whether anybody else has a problem with that, but when we're talking taxpayers' money, I got a big problem with it, especially when it comes for the town. And putting aside that we do partner, and there's a lot of money issues that we deal with a lot of times, this to me is a little different. This is, we're forging our future and doing different things on different, different issues, different bases, and it always deals with town money, not municipal money, just my concern.
Counselor Landry?
I respect the deputy mayor's point of view with the smaller committee, and I mean, as Counselor Mooney pointed out, the waterfront development corporation has morphed into a new creature, is back on Water Street, so, and I really respect the deputy mayor's position of keeping a small, succinct group, so I would have no objection to suggest that, move that Cliff Hood, Bill Hood, Curtis Falls, Dick Stewart, Bob Newell, Phil LeBlanc, Tim Kaiser, and Glenna Boudreau be appointed to the Waterfront Development Corporation.
Okay, there's the motion. I need a seconder.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, no discussion.
Questions?
Okay. And Glenna. Okay? Yeah, yeah, okay. You're good, Linda, you got it all? Okay. Notice, oh, sorry.
Just one quick question before it goes to Glenna Boudreau. Does she meet the criteria to be, is she eligible to be an appointee for this board? Does she live in the town, does she own property in the town? She just sold her business, didn't she just sell her business?
She lives in town.
Oh, she's, oh, she lives in town, okay.
She's good.
Great. I was thinking she lived out of town, that's all. No, it's great, she'd be a good applicant. Thank you.
Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship, I'm fine with the recommendations with the names brought forward, but I do have a question that does not, it does not apply to the waterfront development question here, but it does affect other committees that are coming up, and that is, we have some very, very able people that would be of benefit, that have much to bring to the table at committees and boards, but if they do not satisfy the requirements, the prerequisites, to either apply or sit on a board or committee, how are we going to handle that this evening?
Thank you, your worship, I think I understand, if I understand Counselor Dawes, we have a set of rules in place, and the cao can correct me, and the mayor, but sitting around this table, we as councillors cannot run in our positions until we have all of our taxes, all of our bills, all of our accounts with the town cleared, and we cannot sit around a table and discuss town business when we actually are indebted to the town, and that's been a rule in this community for, since the beginning of time. And naturally, we will have applicants, and we have had applicants before us, of very good, highly qualified individuals, who unfortunately may not satisfy that requirement, and- to make sure they are all in good standing in the town, and unfortunately, some people are not. Now, that has been a standard rule, that has been in place since whenever, and this is not to preclude them from getting their affairs in order and coming back and reapplying to our council, and I hear you, there's some very good people that unfortunately may not be eligible, but once they are free and clear, I think you're gonna see, in most of the applicant, most of the committees tonight, your worship, there will be probably a seat or two kicking around afterwards that'll be open, and people are more than welcome, I would assume, to apply at any time.
I think the question might go to, what happens if we're not aware? So we've already voted someone on a committee, and then we find out. Is that where you're going with it?
As well, yes.
Oops. Go ahead.
As well, yes, thank you.
So we can just make that phone call?
Because we don't want to, I mean, there are, things happen, life is life, everyone's human, and as we all agree, there are some, some people on these lists that we would like to see, sitting on boards and committees, but we do want, we don't want to, we don't want to hurt their feelings, we don't want to embarrass them at the same time.
Good.
Thank you very much.
So we will, we'll take care of it if we find out. I think we, most of the bases were covered with.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, so the motion's on the floor. Any more discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Planning Advisory Committee. We want to... We got the right act on PAC. Keep, keeping in mind as well, these committees are open, so anyone can, anyone can come sit in. I don't think we've ever been at a committee meeting where someone has been turned away to speak or to take part, so that's a, that's a big part as well. CAF?
Right, so, so everyone has a list that looks like this on their desk? I circulated an email this afternoon indicating that there were five applicants that we'd received for various committees that didn't meet our policy. Those five names have been removed from that list.
Oh.
So to our, to our knowledge, everyone on the list that you have in front of you is eligible.
On the new list.
To our knowledge.
Okay. Councillor Landry?
And a question to councillor McLeod, Deputy Mayor McLeod. Planning Advisory Committee, Jim, I would again, respect your insight on this one, where you're the chair of that committee.
Can I just say one thing first? That, do we agree, are we in agreement that one person can sit on, because I see Glenn has applied for this one as well?
No.
One committee, okay, just to keep that, okay? Thank you for letting me do that. Go ahead, deputy.
I, I understand, and I have my new information in front of me, your worship, so I would be supportive of having the top four names on the list participate with our committee, and new, the new people, Vera Sami, Martha Cassidy, Mike Randall. I guess if I'd been thinking ahead, I might have asked for Glenna to work with me in the PAC and let her, let her, but, but certainly, I think they're all good applic, all good new applications, have to choose, and at this point, those are my suggestions.
Thank you. Yeah. Do you want, would you mind repeating those? Go ahead.
Vera Sami, Martha Cassidy, and Mike Randall.
Okay. You're on, councillor Mackay-Zachary?
Thank you. Well, I've got a problem with, probably a couple of them, but that's, we have one here that's missed seven out of nine meetings, and Jim, you recommend that that person stay Then, there's another one, he's only, this other person, only, he's one short of nine to nine, so, this, the other one, Mike Randall, Mike Randall, I don't know, I think he would be in somewhat of a conflict where he sells real estate and everything. To me, my opinion, where he sells real estate, there could be a conflict at some time.
Danny, do you have that list, the other list?
Maybe you got the old list.
You may have an old list there. Do you want to show them, Ken?
I don't know.
Pardon me?
Where is it?
This is the new list.
I got the wrong list, Jim, so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Watch out, the emails will be coming now.
But that's all right, I don't mind the emails.
Anyway, so what you're saying, you've got one, two, three, four, well, there's, that one's still there. Jeff Little missed seven out of nine meetings. That's, to me, that's a lot. That's a lot. That means to me that, for whatever reason, he's not participating. And Mike Randall's still here at the new applicant, and I do believe that there's gonna be a time when he's in a conflict, sitting on there, selling real estate, selling properties, and sitting on here making decisions when it comes to real estate and properties. Look, I'm not saying that he would or wouldn't, but, and I know it perceives to be a conflict, it usually is a conflict, but the person that's in conflict has to say it's not a conflict, and it's not a conflict, but that's just a big gray area that I'm not comfortable with, and I wouldn't want to put him in that, in that recommend, in that predicament. He's, he's looking at another one over on the other side, so, I mean, he put him for a second one, I think he might be best suited, but then again, he's just, he just acquired property in the Town of Yarmouth here not too long ago, and we already have a person that sits in the municipality on the board, on the Mariner Center. Now we're gonna have another person, he lives, Michael Randall lives in the municipality, but he owns property in Yarmouth, and he's gonna, to me, that's still another member from the municipality that's on the Mariner's Board, so, I have a problem with that. I mean, I had a problem with the way that we changed the current rules before, four years ago, whatever it was, and this is, this is the issue that's gonna come up and always come up. That's my thought on it. So, I'm not saying that he's not a good candidate, but I'm a little troubled by the applicant and being on the Planning Advisory Committee. That's just my thought.
Councillor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. Unless the chair of the PAC would like to, would like to speak to that before I?
I can, I can speak either way.
Well, okay, speak, no, then I'll go, I'll go ahead. Go ahead, deputy. Go ahead, we're on a order now.
So with, with respect, and I understand all the thoughts going around the table. Jeff, Jeff Little, I think brings a lot to the, to our committee. He doesn't, he has not attended, I have an indication that he'd be more, he'd be more in attendance at future meetings.
He doesn't need to be pressured for one.
And, and, and he, and he's a large property owner and business operator within our town, so, so for that reason, I'd like to keep Jeff on the committee. The new applicants, I, again, with respect to your thoughts, Danny, I still, I think any one of those five new, six new applicants would be suitable, but I've just made my own thoughts known, and I, and still stand with those thoughts.
No, there's no motion. No, there's, no, there's no motion yet, so we don't, and we really don't need, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I just like, I like Jim's thought process, but I think there's one name at the bottom of the page, Ken Crosby, who was the former chair of the PAC in the municipality, now lives in the Town of Yarmouth. I think he'd be a great addition. We're always trying to partner with the municipality, and Ken knows the pitfalls, he knows the, he knows the bylaws out in the municipality, and I think he's keen, he's willing to contribute, and I think Ken Crosby would be a great addition.
Councillor Dawes?
And when it comes to, and when it comes to Mike Randall, I know Mike lives outside the town, but I'd like to see Mike on the Mariner Center. I know we, it looks like we're gonna have three positions here, and we have one that was canceled with Matthew Trask being on the, on the Waterfront Development Corporation, so I think...
No, there's none on.
Just Glenna.
Okay, just Glenna, okay, well, then we'll come to that one later.
Good. Councillor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. Attendance is, attendance is imperative on these committees, on these boards. We need to have people not only bring, bring their expertise and their strengths to the table, but they have to be at the table to bring and share. Mr. Little does have a lot to, to offer, but he's only been, he's only attended two, actually, two out of the last ten meetings, including the last one. And every board, every committee has, at times, they have quorum problems, and if you're not there, sometimes we can't put a quorum together. Mike Randall, I would like to see him on there. He has a lot to bring to the table, a lot to offer, but I do see the perceived conflict. If we don't see it here, the public is going to see it. Now, back to, and Ken Crosby, I was going to, I was going to speak to Ken Crosby, definitely, I would like to see him on the PAC. And Neil Rogers as well, he has much to offer, much to bring to the table, he is a lifelong resident, been on just about every board and committee, he is knowledgeable, and the last point I'm going to make is, he would attend, he has an attendance record non-plus on the other boards and committees that he has been on. So with those, with the first three, and Vera Sami, Martha, Neil, and Ken, we are assured that we are going to have quorums, we're going to have the right input at the tables. That's who I would suggest. Thank you.
Councillor Landry?
I agree with a lot of the discussion. I'm gonna be very selfish and greedy, I would love to see Vera Sami sent on Heritage Committee, where she has been a leading light in her own area, and I see she has applied for that, so I'm gonna be very mercenary and hope that she would go in that direction. Heritage Committee is, if council will recall, I've offered chairmanship of that freely over the years, and nobody's been jumping at it, so we're gonna have a chance maybe to, to get that committee back on track, and she'd be a great asset. I also agree with the names that are brought forward, especially Ken Crosby. I sit on other boards with Mr. Crosby, and he's a real asset to the Town of Yarmouth now that he is living in the town in his retirement, and I think he's gonna bring a great deal of depth to the PAC. So given that, I'm gonna put a motion on the floor. I'd like to move that the council appoint to the Planning Advisory Committee Donald Usher, John Ryan, Wade Cleveland, Martha Cassidy, Neil Rogers, and Ken Crosby. And if people want to put amendment to that, they can, but that would be my motion.
Well, okay. Now, do I need a seconder before it even, oh, thank you, councillor. Okay, go ahead, councillor Dawes.
Thank you, your worship. I'm sorry, that included Martha Cassidy, Neil Rogers, Ken Crosby?
Martha, Neil, Ken, up the first three?
And the first three, the first three and the bottom three?
Okay.
Okay, I would like to amend that to include Vera Sami, she, I know we're gonna be playing tough, I saw that.
She is interesting, she doesn't want on this.
The, what she has to offer around the, around the table of PAC is just incomparable. She had, she and her husband, they have more than a, more than a fiduciary interest in the future of this town. They, hopefully, they, and their, their plan is to become part of the future of our town. So I would plead vehemently that Vera do become part of the PAC. It was actually her first choice, heritage she does love, heritage, it is her second choice, and she is our first choice. Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ken.
Are you, you good?
Yes, yes.
So that's your amendment?
That would be my amendment.
Vera Sami. Okay, go ahead.
Just to correct you, councillor, no, heritage was her first choice. In fact, reading her letter of application, she is an art historian, she studied history and the heritage in order to understand the culture and restore my home. Culture differentiates people, and Yarmouth become the most valued town in Nova Scotia. If we can restore and market our unique and wonderful heritage. So heritage was her first choice.
Go ahead, councillor.
This is childish, but...
Childish, you're a child, huh?
I'm not gonna volley the ball back and forth. On paper and personal conversations are two different things. Thank you.
So do we have a sec, do we need a seconder for the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay, who's, you go right ahead, you're on.
So I'll second the amendment. Just thinking how many people we have, how many volunteers, Jeff, that we have on the committee currently, up until tonight. So we're voting for three and three or six, and then we would have myself, her worship, and Sandy. We have four councillors on the committee, that's ten. And, yeah, that's, that's appropriate, I'm just, I'm just sort of wanting to make sure, okay. And so a quorum then would be, it changes, we have to have so many volunteers and so many councillors to make up a quorum. So that fits, it makes it workable, so I'm, I'm okay with all that then. I'm looking for new volunteers, people want to work a hundred hours a week.
Okay, so, we're voting first on the amendment, which is to add to the names that you put, to add Vera Sami to that. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Okay, I need hands. In favor? Okay, good.
Favor, I've got the first one.
So the amendment's...
The amendment?
Yes, yes.
I'm not favorite.
Okay, so four to three. Okay. Oh, okay, so now we vote on the motion with Vera as part of it, okay?
Seven, eight.
The seven, all right, I gotcha. So Don Usher, John Ryan, Wade Cleveland, Vera Sami, Martha Cassidy, Neil Rogers, Ken Crosby, Planning Advisory Committee. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. That's two down. Yarmouth Recreation, we are appointing three citizens, and we have...
Three?
It says three citizens, we can have three, right? So there's three, there's three there. We don't have to, just to make it clear, we don't have to take one or all of them, but that's, there it is. Councillor Mooney?
Since we only have, Kevin's only been there for a meeting or two, I nominate Kevin Northrup, Neil McKenzie, and I think Denise Reed's accepting a new position outside the YMCA tent, so I think Denise would be a great addition to the Yarmouth Leisure Services, Yarmouth Recreation.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question?
Questions been called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Congratulations, Kevin. Yeah. And Martha, yes, right, Martha's back there. Rest up, Martha. Okay, Mariner Center, three citizens, we have four names here, but we're after, we are after three. Sorry, councillor, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. For the Mariner Center, I'd like to nominate Jason Ellis, Melanie Lynn Soret Kenny and Mike Randall.
So moved? Why'd you say can't?
No, he's not. No.
All that and you weren't paying attention in the end? No, he doesn't, not until he's a senior, don't cross that line yet. So your motion was for, for Jason Ellis, Melanie Kenny and Mike Randall. Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, so YASTA, I'm thinking we have to bypass because neither one is in the town. Go ahead, Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship, I have a question. It is unfortunate that the, that the two applicants do not qualify, but I have a question. Can other, can other applications still be submitted and accepted even though we're finally, we have changed the deadline a couple of times, there have been circumstances beyond our control that have, that have, have caused us to, to extend our, our deadline so we can, can we?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, and, and the other piece is that because they can, they can certainly apply to the municipality as well. So every, the doors aren't closed and they can certainly attend the meetings, it's, it's just under our rules. Okay, Counselor Mackay?
Your worship, it's just a, it's a given that if a lot of these positions are not filled, I think, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, usually another ad goes in the paper and it's, people can apply again, that fits, fits the criteria, but i- is there a way to make it a little bit more, I haven't checked the website, so I don't, is all the information on there, like you have to be current and, and everything has to be paid up, your, your taxes, your water bill, all the other good stuff, you have to reside in the town of Yarmouth, you either own property or whatever, is that in, in the applicants? Is that in the applicant to, to, when you apply?
That's, that's a, a good question. I'll have a look at how we post it.
Okay.
Certainly we don't post all that upfront, so I'll see if, what we reference the term within that ad.
Yeah.
But the other thing, to be honest, you know, there are a lot of good people out there in the community who are eligible for these positions, who maybe if they were encouraged by a member of council to, to submit their name, it would make, it would probably make a big difference. So I encourage you, you guys, you guys know, I mean, after, after all, for most of these positions, you're looking for people to give you advice in specific topic areas.
That's right.
So you're looking for advisors to you.
Correct.
And if you know people that you, that you trust and you have faith in and, and you know, are, are people in great standing in the community, I encourage you to, to encourage them to submit an application and, and after all, we want to have the best group of advisors we possibly can have.
That's correct, but the, the other stuff, you'll check that out.
And the eligibility criteria, we'll see how clear that is on, on the website and we'll make sure that it is crystal clear and anybody that comes forward, we will make sure they receive that.
Thank you very much.
Good. Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to say thank you for clarifying that because there, there was one, one person in particular who was interested in, in, in applying to sit on the YASTA board, but thought, no, I'm not going to because, deadline, I've already passed the deadline.
So you can find that person and.
Now it's, now it's out there, it's in, it's in the airwaves, thank you.
Good. Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Mackay.
When you, you're coming to the next one, the technology one, okay? So on that technology one, my question will be to Jeff. If my memory serves me right, and usually it does, Ken, you at one time made, brought a motion forward for this technology to be re, rekindred and I don't see, was that put out for people to put their names in there forward for that and there, nobody applied? Isn't that strange?
Well, there's, there's a technology group out there that.
No, but I'm just saying, yeah, I realize that, but I don't see any names here. So that'll be one that you'll be bringing back, Jeff, when you re-advertise, thank you.
And just to speak to that, if you also recall, we did bring it up, that this committee, unfortunately, most of the people involved in technology development are living in the county. And if you recall, I did bring up, and ask the mayor and CAO if they would discuss with their counterparts about a joint technology advisory committee for the two councils, that we could do jointly so that we could accommodate a lot of the techies that are outside. That is the problem, we just do not have the software developers, graphic artists, et cetera, as Yarmouth town residents, so many of them cannot apply because our rule states that you cannot sit on a town committee unless you are a member of the town. We're still gonna have a problem with it because even if we do a joint committee, it's gonna be very difficult to get people, younger people to sit on the committee and I know your worship youth is a huge issue and I, I don't know, I'm almost tempted that we may want to rethink the structure of this committee because, on how it goes with our rules, I don't know whether we can have a committee that is beyond the rules because you have all these techie people who live in the county, work in the town and have a great deal to offer to the community, but on the other hand, they're not able to be there. I don't know what the solution is. I'd love to see this committee up and running. It was a very viable committee in the day when Counselor McKenzie at the time chaired it, but again, all the members of that committee, for the most part, were county residents. Or a good chunk of them were county residents anyway, so I don't know what our solution could be for that. I think it's a valuable asset to have and we really should do it, but maybe the CAO can comment on some ideas.
Just as you were, as you were talking there, it occurred to me that there, that there are groups of, of IT savvy people who are meeting, I know there's a, there's a group that meets the first Thursday of every month and maybe it isn't that we need a standing committee, but maybe what we need is a process where we would engage that group or, or that group plus other interested people in a, in a workshop once or twice a year to talk about public use of, of information technology and data, open data, that kind of thing and see what ideas they can come up with to, to drive us to be more progressive in that way.
And I'll, I'll say further to that, I met with, one of them, I met with Matthew today and, top notch, and, and they are looking for ways, ways to engage us, both ways. He was in the office. Deputy?
I'm, I'm just not hung up on where people live, I look for, I look for the talent. So, so that's, I know, I know there's disagreement around the table, but I'm just looking for the best. And, and I'll just mention the word, we're working real hard towards unification or the other word and, and I just want to keep the process going.
You've got to be the most diplomatic, pro-amalgamation deputy mayor I know.
I think, I think too, you are quite right, there is this little IT group that meets every month. They were for a meeting or two, they met here at Town Hall, in fact, when Rutter's was being done. Maybe what would be worthwhile is to sit down and dialogue with them and if there's some way that we could support them and in turn, they could support us. Because it is a good group, they're an excellent group and I've invited to their meetings every month, but unfortunately, it's tonight, at this very moment, where they're meeting, so it's very difficult to get to those, to those meetings because they tend to meet on the second Thursday of every month at this time. But a lot of them I do know, they're former students and my son's heavily involved with, he was one of the founders of the group with Mark Davis. So they're very anxious to participate, but if there's some way that we as a town could maybe help them and support them somehow, so maybe if you don't mind, your worship, I don't mind going into a dialogue with them and seeing.
I think that's already happening.
Oh, okay, good.
The economic development officer is, is in there with both feet with them, having the discussions, what do they need, how does it need to, she's, she's there.
So is she coming back with us with a recommendation?
Whatever they're, whatever they're after.
Okay, good.
Maybe.
Go ahead.
Maybe, your worship, we can make it an agenda item for committee of the whole and in the meantime, we can get an update from Natalie in terms of what's happened and we can talk about how we might be able to move forward with them and maybe we even have Mark or, or your son come in and be part of that discussion.
Yeah, okay, so Linda, you good for, get that on the committee of the whole? Okay, so we are at Police Advisory Board and it says two citizens.
We have an issue there and I'll explain the issue as the CAO can chime in. One of the positions on the board is the provincial appointment.
Yes.
And Dave Saxton has been in that role because Dave is still awaiting his provincial appointment. So what we did as a council was kind of appoint him, even though government has to do it, as you know, it's, it's a difficulty. So with council's indulgence, I would like to move that David Bissell, Sonya Ryan and Dave Saxton be appointed to the Police Advisory Board.
Yeah, good move. Okay, any, okay, moved and seconded, any discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Heritage Advisory, three to five. And we don't have to do three, we don't have to do five.
Unfortunately, I lost Vera, but you win some and you lose some. Maybe she'll come as a spectator, Jim, you'll let her, I think she will.
I think she will.
She was excellent. She's excellent. Your worship, yeah, we have two excellent names that have been brought forward. I'd like to make a motion that Paul Trask and Mary Ann Parnell be appointed to the Heritage Advisory Committee.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on this?
Questions?
Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Communities in Bloom.
You lost Martha, yeah?
Martha, but Martha will show up regardless, won't you, Martha? That wasn't a question.
Your worship, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that Vivian Kennedy, Barbara Rodney, Fay Allen, David Sallos, Angela Goodwin, Saritha Mackay, David Warner and Heather Hatfield be appointed to the Communities in Bloom.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Did you get that? We can, good, yes. One question?
Thank you, your worship. I guess we didn't quite get that list accurately, so I've gotta reread it. CAO has hearing problems, just teasing.
Let's not blame Linda.
My motion, my motion is that the following few be appointed to Communities in Bloom, Vivian Kennedy, Barbara Rodney, David Sallos, Angela Goodwin, Saritha Mackay, David Warner and Heather Hatfield.
Okay.
And there are some seats open if people want to reapply.
Yes, certainly.
Okay.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. And the next step will be to gather everyone and have a little reception, I guess, and do, do all that business. Good job, okay. Education Week, Counselor Landry?
Your worship, this is a warm and fuzzy. I'd like to move that the town of Yarmouth extend our congratulations to the Town of Yarmouth Education Community as they celebrate Education Week, April 19th to 25th, 2015, that's next week. The theme this year, Commute Schools as Communities, Open Hearts, Open Minds, Open Doors, recognizes Nova Scotia educators who work to support student development by engaging the community through service learning, community projects and cooperative education. We congratulate all of those educators involved in these very innovative programs.
Moved and seconded, I have a question.
What?
Do we just, do we just, do? Do we keep Counselor Mackay away from the coffee people? I'm just wondering, how do you do this? Do you, do you send a letter, do you?
You would send a letter.
Okay, good. Okay, all right.
Probably a citation.
All right. Moved and seconded, any more discussion?
Questions?
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Community litter cleanup incentive program, Counselor Landry?
Well, we've been bandying this around for about a week and I want to thank everybody around the table for their input in this one. It was good, no, it, I must say, this was a really neat exercise and a lot of good ideas and before council is the revised Community Litter Cleanup Incentive Program. And what this is, your worship, just for the benefit of those who are curious, council has approved $3,500 in this fiscal year to help nonprofit groups who will agree to come and clean up sections of the town of Yarmouth which badly need it. The issue was, we didn't have a policy on how this would be dispersed, so we've created a policy and we've taken the former waste check policy used to do it, we amended it, we made some changes and we made it, tailor made it more for our community. And so the policy is before us and I'd like to motion that the town of Yarmouth approve the Community Litter Cleanup Incentive Program policy.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, any discussion? I have one question. Who, who checks? Is it Public Works that does the check before, okay, good, all right, thank you. So moved and seconded, any more discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Request for decision, Yarmouth Minimum Housing. CAO?
Thank you, worship. There's a recommendation here for council to approve an order to provide a written notice to the property owner at 351 Main Street to remedy situations at that property and they're listed in the, in the proposed order, so we would need a motion from council to move forward on that. And for information, I believe the property is unoccupied at the time, so there'll be nobody that will have to be displaced, but nobody will be able to occupy until this order is satisfied, is my understanding.
Excellent. Counselor Landry?
Thank you, worship. This is long overdue and I, with great pleasure, would like to make a recommendation, like to make a motion that council approve the building official to move forward with a written notice to the property owner of 351 Main Street to remedy the following uneven floors, moisture issues, roof repairs, interior walls and ceiling repairs, also a fire separation issue, ensure adequate ventilation, smoke alarms and electrical compliance.
Moved and seconded, Counselor Dawes?
Well, at this point, all I can say is I, I, I can thank the counselor for, for saying all that for me, that's why.
For hitting his button first.
That's right, yes.
Good. Okay, all right, questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Waste diversion, Counselor Dennis?
Motion that Gus Green of Waste Check provide a brief overview of waste diversion at the May Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, discussion, Counselor Landry?
And I do hope he is gonna comment on the article that was recently published with Solid Waste. I'm wondering if we could have maybe our waste park manager attend that briefing as well to talk about the wonderful work that's being done at our waste park. I think an update, Counselor Mooney and I sit on that and very critical to the whole waste diversion has been the work that we're doing at our waste park as well because they tend to go hand in hand.
So was, we need to amend the motion, so.
I'd like to make that as an amendment that we invite. I'd like to make an amendment that we also invite our waste park manager, our Solid Waste Park manager Sheldon to attend, yeah, to attend the meeting, yeah, 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 to attend the meeting.
All right, okay, so, so our first, we're going to vote on the amendment to bring in London from Waste Park. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried and we are voting on Counselor Dennis's with regard to the waste diversion, Gus Green of Waste Check and with the addition of London. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Good job. Perfect. We are at report, Counselor Advisory, Council Advisory Committee, oh, did I miss something?
You missed the power chair leaders.
Where did I get this?
Yeah.
Okay, that's not on mine.
No, that's okay. Special occasion signage, yeah.
Special occasion signage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's not here. Here it is. Am I underneath here?
Julie Sand.
Request for special occasion signage.
What's the date today? Do we make that motion, counsel?
I'm just commenting, I mean, I'm, somebody. I'm just commenting, I mean, somebody else can do the motion. I'm just so pleased to see this. It's really refreshing that a group has come to us, especially a group of young people have come to us. Usually people just slap these things up, you know, around town and don't kind of respect our, know the community's bylaws, et cetera. So I'm, I just wanted to comment how impressed I was to read this, that this group, that Julie Sams and her group took it upon themselves to ask for permission and to do the right thing. So my congratulations. So I'll let somebody else move it. I don't, I don't care if I'm in the minutes or not.
Sure you do. Sure you do, go for it. Sure you do, go for it. Oh. All right. On behalf, on behalf of my seasoned colleague, I will make the motion to accept.
Agent, agent.
To accept the request for a special occasion signage, and if someone would second it, there is something that I would like to add to this.
Second.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded. Go ahead.
One thing that I would like, like to add to this is, I found out, I questioned what type of signage. I didn't question what type of signage, I was just curious to find out. And I was very impressed, and I'm very pleased to share with everybody that these young people actually took the time to go to L&amp;N Signs, and they purchased and ordered a proper, proper respectable, good-looking, professional signage, that they're not just going to staple onto, staple onto a tree or a light post. They're going to do them properly with wooden posts, they're going to pound them, bang them into the ground, so kudos to them. I wanted everybody to know that.
Awesome.
Very proud of, very proud of our youth. So, question?
Good. Yeah. Okay, questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Guess I'm on the new, your lights on, Councilor Dennis?
Oh, sorry.
Council Advisory Committees, Committee of the Hole, March 17th, 2015. Deputy Mayor.
Just one item. I move that the Room Levy Group make a recommendation to Town Council concerning the expansion of the Room Levy.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. So we're on to Committee of the Hole, April 2nd, 2015.
There's 99 recommendations there, your worship. Number one, I move that staff be directed to develop a policy regarding the budget process for the 2016-2017 budget, and years after that, with dates included.
Moved and, I had to read it again. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Question was called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
That's already happening, it's good to see. Number two, I move that staff be directed to request YASDA to contact the Dutch Mason Blues Festival Committee to investigate the possibility of bringing their event to Yarmouth.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that staff be directed to set up a meeting with all advisory committee members to ensure they are informed of council priorities, code of conduct, and other pertinent information as they begin their positions.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me. Contrary? Motion carried.
Number four, I move that staff be directed to develop wording for restrictions on citizens missing advisory committee meetings and bring the wording to the Bylaw Review Committee at its next meeting.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Questions.
Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that staff be directed to look at setting up an information session in the near future for property owners and developers in the Town of Yarmouth involving Heritage, Fire, and any other agencies.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that the report on playground equipment for children with disabilities be referred to the Recreation Director for his review and recommendations as to the next steps to take.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that David Ollie be given permission to attend the opening of the giant, new giant Tiger Store in May.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions? Questions been, questions? Questions been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Number eight, I move that correspondence from the Yarmouth County Agriculture Society be received and placed on file.
So moved? Discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that the Town of Yarmouth fund the annual Adopt a Block program amount not to exceed $3,500 to be taken from the grants to organization amount.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Oh, I did that on CTV Morning Live. I put your email and Facebook account up on the screen, so if you get. Yeah, good. Okay. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
The last one, I move that correspondence from the Digby Area Tourism Association regarding the 183 Loop be referred to YASDA for consideration.
Moved? Moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, so we've got A, B. Now somewhere, I think C was in here. Councilor Landell? Did you, is this where you wanted that?
No.
Okay.
Worship, I thank you for that, and sorry that that was overlooked. Your worship, I circulated to council earlier this week, there's been discussion regarding the Vancouver Street median, and the CAO very kindly circulated two engineering reports to us for our consideration, 2001 and June 2005. And I, I've gone through these, and I'm kind of puzzled, because we're being, I've been asked over the last number of years, especially by truckers and others, looking at the situation of the median in Vancouver Street. And upon reading the traffic engineering report from Galco, which I have sent to council, their recommendation on page 11 read, "The horse fountain would be better relocated to the side of the intersection in an area where it to be safely viewed and approached by pedestrians and where it would not distract motorists or interfere with traffic movement." And then on page nine, it stated, "The new median on Vancouver Street offers more protection to the horse monument than previously existed. However, its presence in a busy intersection can never be considered beneficial to either vehicular pedestrian movements or traffic safety. It is both a distraction to motorists and an unsafe attraction to pedestrians who attempt to view it or be photographed with it. It would be better relocated to the side of the intersection in an area where it could be safely viewed and approached by pedestrians and where it could not distract motorists or interfere with traffic movement." Now, I realize we're hitting a sensitive issue here, so I made a motion, I'd like to make a motion, that staff be directed to advise council, so we're not doing anything except asking staff to look into this and to advise council on the implementation of the recommendations from the Galco Traffic Engineering Report of June 2005 as per page 11. So the motion, if I have a second, or your worship, is simply for staff to look at this, review it, come back to us with their thoughts, because there's maybe something I've missed on that. And then if we can possibly do some wonderful things there to make the traffic flow safer for our residents, because Milton Corner, I'll be honest, your worship, is a nightmare at times, especially people trying to turn left, people trying to turn right, truck movements, Water Street, it's something we really got to look at. We had a great study done in 2005, it was a beautiful study, got a nice stack of them here. And I'd really, really like to see us maybe, maybe take another look at where we're going with Milton Corner. The other concern, your worship, from a police advisory point of view, I did it, attend a, a police advisory conference, oh, some months ago, and it was kind of commented, and I found, I shared this with Councilor Mooney, that one of the RCMP superintendents came up to me and said, "You know, Yarmouth is absolutely brilliant on your location of your new police station." And to echo Councilor Mooney, I said, "We are? We are? We did?" He said, "Yeah, you've got a perfect location." He said, "You guys have got probably one of the best-located police stations of any town in Atlantic Canada." And I, I said, "We do?" Thinking kind of stupid was my question. He said, "Yeah." He said, "You don't realize, he said, "You have a complete straight traffic flow in a low-traffic area to any part of the town, except," he commented, "for this median, you could stuck on Vancouver Street because the cars can't go left. You know, up, they can't, they have to do a dipsy-doodle around to get around there." And that was the only comment that was made. And I've heard that, and I, that's why I'm bringing it forth, I'd like us to look, rethink that whole median and that whole corner, and maybe look at Galco, because they had some good recommendations as to what to do there for traffic flow. So that is my motion.
Good. Councilor Mooney?
Yeah, just to piggyback on Councilor Landell's comments, and I, it's, yeah, we don't echo anymore. I've got a question for the CAO, and maybe for Councilor McLeod, since he was probably around when the fountains were put in.
Oh, my goodness.
I'm just wondering, Jeff, or in Jim's capacity, as Chair of the Waterfront Development, and being around this table probably longer than anybody, when was the last time anybody looked or investigated the fountains in Yarmouth North and Yarmouth South? They could be back working and activated again with, with water running.
I thought we did that with this, with this council, I thought we asked that question.
We asked that question.
Yeah, yeah.
But I was just, yeah, because you notice, I can remember growing up when the, when the fountain in South End was in the middle of Argyle Street, and there was concerns there, so they moved it to the corner, and I think I remember that time.
The concern was made here when it was.
When it was run into by a fire truck. Was it a fire truck? What was it?
Was there a person?
There was an accident down there the other night, too, right?
It was a neighbor.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
But I was just wondering, Jeff, is there, can you remember anything on that topic? Or Jim?
I know it was looked into, the, you're talking about having them functioning again, the fountains, I know it was looked into, and it may be, may be a money issue, but particularly with the one in Milton, the location wouldn't, again, it's, it's not ideally located for, for pedestrians to go and get photos or whatever, so making it even more attractive hazard is not necessarily recommended. But if it were, if it were located elsewhere, in the process of doing that, I would think it would be quite, quite interesting to get it, to get it plumbed and have, have water flowing.
Councilor McIsaac?
Thank you, your worship. Just, just, this will be for Jeff and whoever else wants to listen. Jeff, I come out of that, out of the intersection on, on Water Street yesterday, and along with two other cars that were taking a left-hand turn, and that's going up towards Hebron Way. When the three cars, my, my truck was in the back, and what that, by them two cars being in front of me, my truck in the back, nobody could come out of Water Street to make any turns right, and nobody could come down Vancouver Street to go either way, it was totally blocked off. Now, there was a stream of traffic on the other side of the street that comes, either can go up Vancouver Street, go left, right, or up Vancouver. There was about six cars, and if, luckily, we did make the light, but if any more traffic that's going either way, you're stuck there. So you got Vancouver backed up, you got Water Street backed up, and you ain't going nowhere, right? So that's, that's just one of the problems, and it's been a problem, so, just for your information, that's all.
But there is a motion on the floor.
I have a question on that motion.
What's the motion again?
The motion is, I move that staff redirecting to advise council on the implementation of the recommendations of the Galco Traffic Engineering Report, June 2005 as per page 11, do it.
That's what I thought it was. Okay, moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, so we're on to Citizen Advisory Committees. Planning Advisory Committee, Deputy Mayor.
I move to adopt a new proposed public participation program policy as outlined in Caroline's report.
So moved? Seconded. And seconded, discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to describe that, since you're sitting here?
Can you?
Just a, just a very brief.
Can I just talk about?
No. No.
Fifty billion people watching this. I doubt it.
Sixteen? To the sixteen that are watching right now?
They'll be watching in Florence.
Yeah. Go ahead, Caroline.
All right, so, in speaking with our Planning Advisory Committee.
Take it out of its, take it off its armrest.
You're very helpful today.
So when I first started in this position, and I met with the Planning Advisory Committee, there were some concerns about how we, how the town currently holds its public participation program, which is a requirement by the, by the province. The Planning Advisory Committee felt that they weren't getting meaningful feedback, and they weren't able to pass on feedback from the residents to council to make meaningful decisions. So this policy is a result of that conversation, and then also a public participation meeting that was held by the Planning and Advisory Committee. It's kind of different. It gives a lot of flexibility to the public participation process. It allows, basically, if, for each amendment that comes in, that requires an amendment to the municipal planning strategy, the Planning and Advisory Committee will not only make a decision on how they want to move forward with that application, but they'll also make a decision about who should be engaged from the public, and what's the best, best method to engage them. And then from there, the Planning and Advisory Committee will reach out to them. So that's kind of the idea behind this, and it gives them, it gives that flexibility to be able to try new things, I guess. Yeah, so.
Good. Thank you very much. Okay, deputy?
Your worship.
We didn't vote on it? Any discussion on that?
I just had a, a comment. Beside Counselor Danny and Caroline are two boards, they're very colorful, and, and one of them relates to the public participation that she's described tonight, and it's, it's making the activity or the work of the PAC, I think, easier, and so I appreciate the effort that she and her staff have put in to get us to this point, and look forward to working with PAC and the new PAC, and also the group that's going to help us develop our new, our strategy and our land use bylaw. So thank you very much, Caroline and PAC people.
It's more interesting, too. It's, it's really pretty cool.
I have a question.
Yeah. Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, so we are at Heritage Advisory. Councilor Landell?
Thank you, your worship. The Heritage Advisory Committee was given an application by us, the Town of Yarmouth, for the, to designate 90 Water Street as a municipal heritage building. Therefore, your worship, it is my recommendation, and from the Heritage Committee is advising that the Town of Yarmouth designate 90. that the Town of Yarmouth designate 90 Water Street, known as the Kildon Building, as a municipal heritage property.
So moved? Moved and seconded, discussion? Deputy?
Your worship, and fellow councilors, we're, the town is in the process of hoping to sell the building. Does this make the sale of the building more difficult, uh, more challenging, um, with the restrictions that a heritage designation may place on it?
I, I think it, it may make it more challenging, but I think, from, from my perspective, it protects it, and, and I think, from my perspective, protection trumps ease, if that makes sense. But that's just my, uh-
And I defer to the CAO on this one, but I believe this is the first of the process. Uh, all we are doing here is, we're recommending it to you, uh, we have to go through a public hearing for this, uh, and the public will have time, so this process goes on for a while, uh, before we actually do designate it, so if somebody steps forth in the next while and purchases the building, and I would defer to the solicitor, and we sign the building over before the process is over, I'm assuming that the new property owner would then have a decision to make to protect it. I don't think we would have to, if it was, if the protection is in place before the building is sold, and the protection is in place, but I'm just wondering to the solicitor, if somebody comes and purchases the building tomorrow, and the protection is not in place, then our application would not, would be moot.
But I, I think it's fair to say that the application is going to, if it goes ahead, the designation's gonna go on before there'd be any sale, so I mean, if something did happen in a very short period of time, you know, before, before it gets done, yes, but likely this designation will, will go on if council proceeds.
And just a sidebar to Deputy Mayor, having a heritage property, and living in one myself as does Counselor Dennis here, um, we, there are certain encumbrances on them, but they are very attractive to certain individuals who, who know the building is protected, and now especially, the provincial government has put in place, uh, some very generous funding for heritage property owners, they can apply for, uh, funding for the exterior restoration, et cetera, of the building, uh, every two years, and I think it's a matching grant up to $7,500, which is available, plus there are other considerations, so it, there is that now available, so, yes, I agree, but I also echo, uh, piggyback on the mayor's comment, we're not echoing anymore.
All right, might have to ban a couple more words, but that's okay.
Yeah, you have to get a new few more, uh, but, but really, I think the onus is on us to protect a landmark on our waterfront, in which this building is, and I've, it's been a big concern from individuals who have seen it for sale, and they do want to see it preserved, at least the exterior fabric of the building to be preserved, and that's all we are doing, is preserving the exterior fabric. What happens inside, we have no say over.
Councilor McIsaac?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, Jim, to answer your question, I had two business people that potentially were interested in, uh, in, in the building, and they didn't like the idea of putting it as a heritage building. I don't think they had any intention of ripping and tearing anything down, and, but they, they said, you know, why, and I said, "Well, this is, this is the reason why they're, they're doing it, because they deem it's heritage, and that's it." But I, I'm not gonna go into a whole lot, but when you look at Water Street, as it stands today, and it was 30, 40 years ago, it's a far cry from what it was, a lot of the heritage building, a lot of the properties are since gone, a lot of the walkways, the streets, the railways, the roundhouse, all the, all the infrastructure, all, a lot of the work in Water Street is gone, it's been gone for years, it's more modernized than anything. The only thing that has a lot of character that's left is probably the Rutter's Restaurant Building, that, that has a lot of character, that remained the same. A lot of the other buildings, and, and the ironworks down what we used to call Bonda, now Kennebec, or whatever, that, that remains the same with some modifications in there. Water Street is a working Water Street, along with the Killen Brothers Building. The Killen Brothers Building was falling down around itself till somebody bought it, and, and then the town took it over and spent three or $400,000 in it by fixing it up, and, uh, so, it, it is a working Water Street, it is a heritage building, but I think this puts, uh, dampers on the building itself, uh, for people to, to respond to buying, I don't think it's gonna stop them, because there is provisions in there where the per, it just, it just makes the person has to go through a lot of paperwork to re, just to get it not, to get it taken off being a heritage property, and if they want to do anything to modernize it, or do anything they want to do, so, uh, that, that was, that was the people that, uh, that came to me and talked to me about it, not that these people wanted to change the superstructure or anything like that, they didn't, they had no intention of doing that, but it's just when you make something a heritage property, it has good things, but it also has restrictive things, and that's what their concerns were, that's all. And I don't believe anybody that purchased a bill is gonna do anything to the building, I think the building is unique, it's nice, uh, the town taxpayers have spent lots of money there, some that they had to spend, and some that through neglect, they didn't have to spend, but nevertheless, they spent the money, and, uh, th- these are a couple of very prominent business people, that they did have concerns with their own heritage.
Did you have your light on, you had to turn it off? Go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, um, Counselor McIsaac is, is right on, uh, having a heritage building is harder to sell, um, but I think a lot of it is, too, is the, some of the misconception of having a herit, a historic building, um, you're not allowed to do this, and you're not allowed to do that. So, there is restrictions, but it's just on the outside, it's got nothing to do with the inside, and the building being on Water Street, we do want to keep it, because look at, a lot of our heritage buildings are gone, and it's nice, it's, it's good to try to keep what we have, and, uh, but I'm for, um, making it a heritage property.
Okay, so the motion's on the floor, was that seconded? Moved and seconded, discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary?
Aye.
Motion carried. We are at, okay, I'm on the next page here, Amendments to Heritage Property Act, Counselor Landale?
Yes, your worship, um, the Heritage Advisory Committee, all of the provinces of Nova Scotia's in the process of making amendments to the Heritage Property Act and the Heritage Conservation District Regulations, province-wide, all councils were sent to correspondence, and I think all of us received this from the province, looking for ins, input into the proposed changes. The Heritage Advisory Committee, with the tremendous help of our planner, went through this at length, um, and has presented to you a, a list of recommendations that we would like council to endorse, and to forward to the provinces of Nova Scotia for their consideration before June 2015, so, my motion is, is that council accept the recommendation of the Heritage Advisory Committee with regard to the proposed amendments to the response of the Town of Yarmouth for the proposed amendments to the Heritage Property Act and Heritage Conservation District as brought forth by the planner and the Heritage Advisory Committee.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Reports for information, they're there. Counselor McIsaac's not here, so I won't do my mayor's report.
When you come back, see you all done.
Yeah, I waited for you, I waited for you. Any questions for committee chairs?
None.
Good. Um, and the additions, let's start, 11A, recommendation from PAC, April 7th, 2015, and that was attached. CAO, you speak to that?
Uh, unless the chair wishes to.
Deputy Mayor, did you want to speak to that, or have the CAO, or?
What's 79 Main?
Now, this was just added to, this was just added, deputy, so you may not have it online.
I don't have it.
Counselor Landale, your light's on, just so you're aware of that. That's okay.
This is, uh, from our advisory committee meeting of April the 7th, a motion to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the land use bylaw to remove the split zoning of 79 Main Street from low-density residential R1 and second, secondary commercial C3 to secondary commercial C3 as outlined in Caroline's report.
Second.
That's the, that's the parking lot, Ken.
Yeah.
Caroline, did you wish to add, or are you, uh, okay at this point?
I'm not gonna go through that again.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion? Questions been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. That was the only one? Okay. Welcome and thank you, Counselor Doss.
Turn my light on. Am I on?
You are.
Thank you, uh, really, really short. I did identify it as FYI, welcome and thank you, uh, it's gonna, I'm gonna start with FYI, thank you, and then a welcome, I'm gonna do backwards. Uh, this is just to share with everyone who's watching, listening, that if anyone saw any groups of young people in town today that were armed with cameras, tripod and a white umbrella, well, they are students, and they're part of the NSCC Waterfront Campus in Dartmouth Photography Program. This was in, a request that came to council or committee the whole couple of weeks ago. Uh, it's a school project which identifies a community in Nova Scotia through photographic images each year, and this year, they chose Yarmouth. So, there's the thank you part, thank you for choosing Yarmouth this year. Uh, what these students do, what this, this class does, they compile their photos in a book called This Day In, and then the in, you just fill in the blank, every year, it's a different, if it's, it's a, it's a different community that they visited, and although I don't know exactly when, but we will be able to view this day in Yarmouth on their website, www dot blurb dot ca. Now, I had the pleasure of meeting and talking with one of the groups this morning, they're great kids, it's a great project, and I just wanted to share this with everyone who sees them out in the, out in the town tomorrow, they're only here until tomorrow, uh, it was a two-day project, today and tomorrow, and, uh, tell everyone, ask everyone to give, give them when they see them, a nice big Yarmouth smile, and a big welcome to Yarmouth. That was it, thank you very much.
Thank you. So they can't, they, they spoke with me today, I just want to let council know that there's one of the books they put together, I think they did Lockport, that's in my office. Beautiful, beautiful book, so it'll be good to get that. Additions, now, the last addition I had was Vancouver Street Median, are you good with that? We covered that? We did that, the Communities of Bloomingdale's. Oh, I thought that was it, okay. Go ahead.
Yes, your worship, just to give a plug here, um, we will be doing a community cleanup the 29th to the 4th, up this month to the 4th of May. The town is, is actually cleaning up quite nicely, um, noticing that there's been a lot of effort by property owners to clean up their properties and the, on behalf of the Communities of Blooming, and I know of all of us around the table, we give thanks for that, um, we would encourage a lot of the landlords, if they would take a little bit of pride in their properties, because we do see a lot of the rental units could really be involved. This evening, your worship, we did pass the, uh, the whole incentive program for litter cleanup, and we're really hoping that volunteer groups will be involved, but most significantly, what we're looking at is people to adopt parts of the town, like Stars Road, Main Street, uh, the Sea Cadets very kindly have offered to do Water Street, et cetera, et cetera, as they've done in the past, so, uh, we're asking people to please contact our, um, engineer's office, Sabrina Feven, 742-7525, or myself, and we're gonna try to, to get as many people out. We do have special marked bags that will be available, and these bags will be picked up by our town staff, because they'll see those colors, and they'll know exactly that there are bags, and that we will take care of them, so you don't have to put it in your normal waste that you would be doing. However, I suspect this weekend, with good weather, people will be doing it, and again, the separation policy of waste check, you know, is there, uh, but however, we would encourage you all to, to do as what you can to clean up your community, so, a little bit of a plug, we are looking on a promotion, uh, what we'd like to do, your worship, um, is if people take pictures of themselves with their garbage, if they could send a picture to us, uh, they'll be in a draw for some prizes, which we're working, uh, right now with some of the larger polluters, shall we say, in the town, if you'll notice, a lot of our fast food restaurants, a lot of our coffee places, there tends to be a great preponderance of their litter, so we're hoping that they'll sweeten the pot by giving us some gift coupons that we will randomly draw for prizes for individuals who've kindly agreed to, to clean up a lot of it, but, uh, it's coming really well, so the 29th to the 4th is a big cleanup, we'll be putting a lot of push on next week, uh, the Yarmouth Vanguard is, uh, helping us out, Radio CJLS is helping us out, and I thank both Tina and Kevin for their work, and Gary Nickerson for helping us, and we would encourage everybody to really, this year, go at it and clean up the town, your worship, you gave me a list of the volunteers from, you're all hands on deck, and I thank you for that, and we'll be, uh, contacting each of them individually, inviting them to, to please, you know, do their bit and clean up the town, even if people just clean around their yards, and most importantly, if you're living near a senior, somebody who's an older person, a senior that may not be, except for Jim, who's beyond senior, like him and I, uh, feel, feel free to help them a little bit, a little bit of help will go a long way, so that was the only point, your worship, thank you.
Good, thank you. Okay, so approval of invoices?
Move.
Date of next meeting is May 14th, and we have one short in-camera item.
I, I move adjourn.
Adjourn, move to go in camera.
We're going in camera.
Okay, good.
Yeah.